Thanks Bob. I will call the meeting to order. We're currently waiting for at least one member, possibly two, but we can start with our preliminary business. And at that point, I would ask if anyone's recording? Would they make it known? I got a roomful. We have no meeting minutes for the 14th. The next item is covenant release for Burgess Point Shores subdivision. John Deekus, what's the... Ah, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Steve Giosa with SciTech Engineering, representing John Deekus this evening. I don't know how many members of the board remember this project. It was approved by the planning board about 15 years ago. It's an eight lot subdivision off Burgess Point Road, known as Burgess Point Shores. John developed the subdivision, constructed the roadway in that time period, actually sold one of the lots in the cul-de-sac that's actually been constructed on, so there's only one house that's ever been built in the project. Over the last few months, John has been negotiating with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. The Buzzards Bay Coalition wants to purchase three, possibly four, of the lots for preservation and the development. So their attorney, Mark Duchesne, who's doing his research, came across the covenant on record at the registry that had not been released for this project. So we went out, took a look at the construction, all the road bounds are in place, obviously the road is paved, the detention ponds have been constructed, they're stable, and so John asked that we present the request to have the covenant released, and at this point looking for all the lots to be released, but again, we'll defer to the board. The attorney for the Buzzards Bay Coalition is primarily concerned with lots two, three, and five. And on the plan, this is the lot with the house on it, and lots two, three, and five are the ones closest to the water. So obviously, those are the lots that the Coalition is looking for preservation. I know there's one more lot that they're considering purchasing as well, but I'm not sure which lot that is. But at this point, we're looking to see if the planning board is comfortable with the release. I don't have a copy of the covenant, but I do have the book and page reference for the recorded document with me, and I understand you may not have a copy in your file of the original covenant.
That's correct. We did the research and the files did not find the paper copy of the covenant, so we'll have to get it from the land records.
Has the subdivision been inspected? Have you looked at it, Sean?
No. We haven't been asked to yet.
And, can't see what lot that is. You say lot four, is it? It's been sold?
Yeah, there's actually a house that's been constructed on lot four, which is right at the end of the cul-de-sac, and again, the three primary lots that they're interested at these three here at this point in time.
The, I guess we need a letter from municipal maintenance, right, to say that the road is completed?
Right.
Or chowries, whatever. Must have been a lot released for lot four, right?
That's what we assume, but there's no paperwork.
Can't find it.
It's been 15 years that was done?
Has it been that long?
15 years, you said?
15 years, yes. It was 2003, the project was originally approved by the board and by Conservation. And they came across the same issues with Conservation. There were a couple of, the order of conditions for the road never got released, and there was an order of conditions issued for lot three, for a house development that was proposed at the time, that never got constructed, that I think the Conservation Commission released last week, and we're working with the Coalition and the Commission to get at least the lots that they're looking for released, so they can move ahead with the acquisition of the land.
Been here almost as long as you.
Seemed like it was only a couple of years ago.
The process for this is to have the road inspected and get a letter that it's up to standard, and then we would go through with a lot, the covenant release.
Okay. Now, is that something the board requests the inspection, or do we reach out to Public Works or someone else in the...
That'll be my office, we'll...
Okay. All right.
We'll request the inspection.
All right. Should it be a written request, or are we on the books now to get an inspection at this point?
We'll do it by email.
Okay. All right, excellent. I'll leave you my card. It'll have all my contact information, and then, I know that they'll be asking when we could get back on your agenda, when you think that inspection could occur, so we can see if you folks are comfortable with a release at this point.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is the 25th.
That should give us enough time.
I would think that would be adequate.
Okay. I can get that letter done. Could you have Jasmine pull the file for that, so we can take a look at it to make sure there are any outstanding other issues as part of the approval?
We can. She did pull the file, and there's no paperwork in the file that we have in our office.
Nothing at all?
Just plans, and I don't know if that was the correct plan set.
Uh, could she check with the town clerk to see if there's a certificate of approval?
Yes. That's what we'll do, we'll do the research on.
Okay, all right. Because sometimes there are things like, back then, they were asking for plans for potential road approval to be taken by the town. There might be some other quirky things in there that might jeopardize granting a covenant release if those items aren't done. Not saying there are any, but I always like to check, just in case there are any loose ends. But I'll be happy to get the report done for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Sounds like we have a plan.
Would the covenant have been recorded at the registry?
Yes.
Yes.
I have the recording information, so I can get a recorded copy to you folks. Thanks. So you have a version that's been recorded, so that's easy enough. I'll email it over here, once I have the email of whoever we should be directing documents to. So that's easy enough. But that's how we came to today, is the lawyers found that there had not been a release of the covenant, because it is in the title.
Very good.
Okay. All right, appreciate your help.
Ken will be in touch, and I've got you penciled in for the 25th.
Terrific. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Next item is taking of the bond for Preservation Lane, road completion.
This one, we do have the paperwork for, but what we don't have is a most recent inspection report on the condition of the road and an estimate of the work remaining. We have in the account $115,406.53 on the bond, so it would appear that we have sufficient money to do the work, but we need to make sure and have the condition of the road inspected and the determination of what it would take to make the, complete the road, the subdivision road as originally approved.
Preservation, that's down in the creme de cité?
Yeah.
Way down in the end on the right?
Not way down, but before you get to...
Three quarters of the way down.
Before you get to, what's that, what's that called? Hunamesset Shores or something or not?
It's on the right. Before you get to, like, Sipican and...
Natapoysit, that little village, like, that's in the middle.
Little short streets on the right-hand side, just goes in a short ways in the cul-de-sac. Yeah. I did take a look at it with David Menard. It's going to require more than just the top course of paving. There's been some repair done to the base course, probably is going to take a leveling course just to get it smooth, because it's kind of rough. The structures need to be raised to the proper grade to allow the top course to be put on. There's no evidence of any concrete bounds out there, but there may be. The plans do show concrete bounds being set at all the points of curvature and so forth, but there's no evidence that they're there. So things like that need to be verified as far as the cost is concerned.
There's been no movement with the developer on completing this on his own?
No, there hasn't.
Has he responded to...
No, he has not. So we'll, we'll check in with Rich Bow and Town Council as to what is necessary to notify the developer, and then proceed with the taking of the bond.
Has he been notified?
Yes, he has.
I think it has to be notified by certified mail.
Right.
So is that what you're seeking? Are you still looking for advice of council, or are you looking for a motion?
Looking for advice from council.
At this point. I know a previous situation where we worked out something with the homeowners, where they were able to get the project done, and then the bond was released to them, but that would take some cooperation from the developer. Because one of those, signed the check to developer, developer signed it and handed it to the contractor, right?
Yeah, so we have several options available.
But...
Which would probably be preferred than to take on the job as a public, as a town project.
I couldn't think of his name. I just saw it on the plan.
Scott Plagden.
So you don't need anything further on that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Except that you'll want to...
Leave it on as an agenda item for...
Yeah, for continuation.
Is that amount going to be, we don't know if that amount's going to be enough to finish the project, right?
No, we don't. It hasn't been done of the work yet, right?
Excuse me?
An estimate has not been done of the work remaining.
No, no.
Is that premature to get an estimate now, or...
No, I think that might be reasonable, if we have the report of what's necessary.
I'll get that. I've got the notes in my book, and I'll just put it together, and Dave Menard and I can sign it together, and get it to the board, get it to Ken's office. Yeah. That does bring up an issue, though, with respect to this, it's been, even that one is a long time, and one of the things that would probably make the process move a little bit more in terms of the contract, it would be that if cash or any other kind of bond gets posted for the release of lots, that you put a timeframe on when that work has to be done. Typically, they want lot releases right away, so they can get started with building, while the road yet has to be completed. But when you do that, Chapter 41 suggests that you should put a timeframe on how long that bond or that cash sits in the town coffers before the project is completed. So you don't end up with inflation issues, or somebody just running off and leaving or holding the bag. So if it were to be done, say, within a couple of years of the time that the lot releases were done, at least you'd have some idea that the prices that you put up are reasonable. Now, after these so many years with inflation and the price of oil going up for mix and all that, there's no guarantee that the prices are going to be good. So just one thing to bear in mind in future subdivisions, where they look for releases before the finished product is done.
Yeah, I think since this project was approved, that fact has been brought to the board, and I think we're more cognizant of it now than we were back then. So what, do you want a motion to continue that, even though it's a, just put it on the agenda for the 25th also?
Right.
The next item is A and R for 1416 Winter Street. Gee, I was thinking that was over to the area over where you are. Is there a Winter Street over there, too?
Summer.
I know there's summer and fall and spring, but...
They don't like winter over there.
It's just, like, Rose Point, right?
Yeah.
So what have we got here, Ken?
They're reconfiguring the boundary between the two dwellings on Winter Street to adjust for zoning setbacks.
To build the deck?
There's a little notch here that...
That's a notch, yes.
They're franking this out to make room for that.
I thought our most recent bylaw change eliminated the need of counting of decks in their, in their predences.
Not of decks.
Well...
But of...
Just eves and corises? I thought it included, like, steps and things like that, too, no?
Steps, but not a deck.
They're just swapping a little bit here for that.
So two neighbors working together to make it happen?
Yeah.
How's it around with that? That works?
My neighbor and I did the same thing, exactly.
So this line already exists, you're just bumping it over a little bit?
Correct.
But not... Not correct on this side.
No, I guess they didn't get an okay from those people over there. The house is still non-conforming in dimensional standards, since it doesn't meet the front yard setback of 20 feet.
But that would only come into play if they wanted to go forward, right? Come forward with an addition or a deck or...
If they want to make a modification to the building footprint, it would be as a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Neither one of them meets the front setback?
Neither one of them, yeah.
Same person owns both lots? Both lots held in common ownership?
Doesn't Ozcoon Ave die off into the swamp? That's not constructed, all of it, is it? I'm looking at, I'm looking at the locus here.
Oh, it doesn't make any difference. Entertainer motion to endorse?
I would.
For me, for Richard Brok? At 14 Winter Street? Okay. The dwellings are currently legally non-conforming, currently?
They're pre-existing non-conforming. And this is permissible by state law to modify lot lines in between properties, even though they're, they may not meet the other requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Well, it's only a 9,000 square foot lot, each of them. Well, this is real small.
They were two miles, and one may be better quality.
God, 10,000. So we have a motion to endorse, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, abstained. Take heart.
I want these back, I'll give a roll. As an office boy, as an office boy, the first thing I was taught was how to fold a joint, so you could see the...
Light, you're a pilot, right? So it's three.
I did it for a couple of years.
That was your worst job. A and R.
Yeah, I know. Got to get six. It's a terrible program. It's a terrible format. It's a terrible format on the sheet.
Yeah. Didn't put the signature block in.
Oh, it's on there, I think it's on, wait, we signed those? Oh, we signed the my lot.
Oh, we actually have copies in the file. That brings us to the continued public hearing, which I would table till we have our fourth member show up. Referral on the Water Whiz proposed expansion. That one's signed, this one's signed. Enough.
Oh, we got just one? We got any more?
You got more?
We just got one.
That is the footprint of Hong Kong Island?
The restaurant?
Yeah.
This is taking the Hong Kong Restaurant. The building has been demolished, and they want to expand the parking for Water Whiz into the adjoining property.
There was a question?
What are those elements, those shaded rectangles? Are they landscaping, or...
I don't think they probably should be, but I don't know if they're...
Okay. See this existing curb cut right here?
Mm-hmm.
That's the, that's the gas station curb cut. I know it goes way up like that. This is the other one. So they're going to keep the same curb cuts that are there now, right?
Has anybody overlaid the proposal changes to Cranberry Highway on this? Is it outside the layout?
Nobody's overlaid the changes, I'm aware of.
Probably mine.
Right here.
Looks like it goes all the way up.
Yeah, the curb cut, they must have, they have, they must have an easement across there, that curb cut.
Oh, you know, curb. Keeping out of sight.
Because basically, if you look at it right now, it's all wide open.
No, there is a small island, like, around the sign and stuff.
I think we should call your sister, she used to work there when I was leaning a towel. Going way back.
Charlie, have you been engaged on this one?
I think you have a letter on it?
Yes.
But I haven't got anything back, says go ahead and review it.
Okay.
But I have taken a look at the site, and I had a conversation with Rich Cirque the other day about it. What I saw was that when I drove there, I was on my way down to the Cape and Islands project to look at that, so I stopped in at this site first, and my intention was to drive into the parking lot for the old Hong Kong Island. When you get there, it's very difficult to tell where you need to turn in. The entrance to the Water Whiz is right next to it. Then you've got, I think, Mike, you mentioned an island?
Yes.
And the opening that goes to the old Hong Kong Island is hard to see exactly where it is. One of the things I was going to recommend to the Board of Appeals was that they somehow control that so that the Water Whiz entrance is the main entrance, even for that parking lot.
To the, to the one on Water Whiz?
If you look on the plan, I think you'll find on the left-hand side of the Water Whiz entrance, there is an asphalt curb that's there, and it runs quite a ways into the property. So you can't get to that Hong Kong Island area directly unless you make a break in that, in that curbing. The second thing is that the asphalt that there is in real rough shape, and where they took the building out, they simply threw a little bit of dirt over the top of it with a little bit of reclaimed material, pushed it around, left big ruts in it. It's in no condition to be really used as a parking lot right now. But I had a call from the engineer on the project that drew that plan, and he said they had no intentions of doing any upgrade to that lot at all. Dave Rakina wrote them a letter and said that they had to abide by the parking bylaws. Dave Rakina wrote them a letter and said that they had to abide by, uh, the parking bylaw, the landscape bylaw. And there was one other thing, uh, that was there. So, my intention was to simply write a report on the existing conditions and simply say that to use it as a parking lot, the way that the town building inspector had said, there needs to be a lot of improvements. So, I don't know where it sits. It's the opinion of Attorney Cirky that they don't need to make any improvements. But they gotta do something, especially for that entrance. I think that's gonna be a dangerous place to come in and out.
Yeah, the entrance to what was Hong Kong and then exit from the existing Water Whiz was confused, as you say.
Yeah.
But they also have a lot of, uh, problems with emergency access. You know, the ambulance makes multiple trips there, and it's difficult to get in and out. And as you say, there should be some connectivity so you don't have to go back out on the Cranberry Highway to go into the next one.
Charlie, on the, on the right, lower right of this plan, there's fifteen spots in there where the existing trees are. Now, they got aligned as parking spots. I see two of them right on top of the grease traps. Or whatever's left there.
I don't, there aren't any trees in the middle of that lot anymore.
The grease trap was behind Hong Kong, so...
There's a few old, uh, white lines that you can still see from the old Hong Kong paving. But, uh... They go every, which way from Sunday. You know, you have a bunch of them that, as I recall it, were sort of running perpendicular to the road that goes into the Water Whiz. And then there was another series of them in the middle of things that were at right angles to them. It, uh, it makes no sense to just leave it there without doing some sort of an upgrade to help people manage where they're gonna be going.
Is, is there any way, can we make them combine? Or the existing parking half of Water Whiz in this parcel here, to marry them together, sort of some rhyme and reason? Because right now, it's just a hodgepots.
That makes an enormous amount of sense, to combine the parking together so you get better circulation between.
Yeah.
It's, one of the things that, um, could become an issue would be, um... I don't know whether you meant whether to combine the properties together?
Not combine them, just, just the overall layout, so there's some...
Rearrange the whole thing?
Right, right.
Yeah, that would make some sense. One of the things that we did talk about was, with, that I talked with Attorney Cirky about, that was in my mind, was that if we temporarily blocked off the old Hong Kong entrance to make people come into the Water Whiz for everything, as long as it's used for a parking lot for Water Whiz, maintain that area blocked off.
Yeah.
But if for some reason that parking lot is no longer usable and it gets sold, then you've still got an, uh, a curb cut that's effective with the state. That they could, they'll have to reapply for a curb cut for any new use. That, that's standard operating procedure with the state.
The, the other curb cut, the one on top to the right, the one that goes into the gas station?
Yeah.
Is a nightmare as it is now.
Yes, it is. And it, it's terribly confusing. And I can imagine people going to Water Whiz for the first time, coming down that highway with ten or fifteen cars on their tail that just left the light at the old Walmart entrance?
Yeah.
Now, they're trying to figure out where to go? It's gonna be very complicated.
When you come to that gas station, of course, it's all wide open.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's gonna be a total nightmare.
So, there, there needs to be some upgrade, at least of the entrance, and do something to smooth it out. Now, they did file and get an order of conditions from Conservation for doing something in the back. But I'm not sure exactly what.
Wow.
Whether they were gonna open up a little bit or regrade, I'm not sure.
Well, this area is clear. The thing is, the wetland buffer runs right into this parking area. Wow.
And existing tree line.
Yeah.
So, they're talking about coming back.
Yeah, but Char- Charlie, you said them trees are gone, the ones in the back now, right?
Well, there is still a tree line back there, so I'm not sure whether their intent with Conservation was to, uh, cut some of those trees back or square off the parking lot. It's not identified on the plan, so you can't tell what they were proposing to do.
Yeah, there's some additional clearing planned behind...
Behind the old restaurant.
Because if you look, the, the vegetation went up here before.
Okay, and here we go again. That's the fifteen spaces I was talking about on this area in here. So, what, they're gonna leave, leave it as gravel?
I think last season, they, they just had enough time to get the old building down and get the slab out of there and then just threw something in the...
Yeah, but it wasn't graded or compacted, and it's a mess. I mean, if you put people in there today, it gets stuck.
And if, I mean, really, if they, if they wanna put yet another parking lot on that road...
And on a busy day, there was no direct, there was no rhyme and reason to the parking.
Where's the facility?
The facility's right here, the park. This is the main parking, and this is their office building that sits right out.
So, if you park here, you get over there.
Just walk across.
There are cars over there. And you're squeezed between cars.
Yeah.
I, I, I would, you know, when they grade drawings like this, of course, the whole function is shown. The relationship of what, of what's existing and what is proposed, how do they work with each other? I hear you, Manuel. Park off.
Talking to the mic. Sorry. No, I was just asking that when we are presented with plans where new work is being proposed next to existing, uh, facilities, that both the existing and the proposed be shown so that they can be evaluated, uh, in unison rather than individually. The way, the way that these cars are, the parking spaces are laid out, it's difficult for someone that parks in this new proposed area to walk... They, the, as I, as best as I can see, they have to walk between parked cars to get... There's, there are no, no walks, no... Yeah, so anyway, I...
It's hard, it's hard to evaluate. Plus the two curb cuts. The two curb cuts don't really relate to the new traffic flow. Is it possible to yet?
You go by there in the morning when they open, prior to their open, on a good day, the whole street's a mess because people can't get in, they're all backed up onto the highway.
Kids are all...
You've got school buses crossing travel lanes, and it's...
Because in a parking, you say, for service, that's a... This is, yes, now.
And you have cars queuing up because the first parking lot's full. Where do they go? Somebody's gotta give them directions, and it's...
Right, so...
I mean, it's nice that they're busy and they have a short season, but...
If you've driven into this lot and it's full, you have to come back onto Cranberry Highway to get into this one.
Exactly.
But there are cars here, too.
Well, under existing conditions, you can cut through here. But it's, it's not an established...
And it's right next to, next to the curb cut where cars are coming in?
Exactly, there's, yeah, there's a cut.
I, I would ask for a, a parking plan for the whole thing, so that this is part of it. Part of a...
I would hope that they have done that work to get the optimum out of the property because they need all the parking they can get.
So, what are we being asked to comment on?
You're asked, you're being asked to comment on the, uh, the application that's before the Board of Appeals?
Which is?
Which is this plan?
Just this? Just this? Or...
So, what, so I think what I've heard is that you're looking for suggestion that the Board of Appeals consider the curb cuts, the larger plan and coordination between the different properties, the surface of the, of the, uh... of the parking area and the landscaping that's included in the plan.
And internal, internal circulation, so that you don't have to come back onto Cranberry Highway, which is, is pretty difficult already.
Actually, if they could take, make use of this area here all the way across and queue people up on their own property, that, that would be beneficial.
And get closing curb cuts. I know people who like to close curb cuts on Mass Highway, but... They're, they're gonna be, there're gonna be some definition to segregate the one that goes to the gas station. I'd have to talk. But that's a mess.
So, the gas station uses this lot?
Gas station is right there.
They, they cut across there, they, they back their tanker in there to...
Because the gas station doesn't have a curb cut right there. It's a shared curb.
That's where their in-ground tanks are, so a lot of times you have the tanker backing in there.
So, next, we just wait and see. Ken, do they plan on using Walmart parking like they did last year? Over by Tractor Supply?
Uh, they're, they're not showing it in this plan.
That's something that we, you know, I think we might be interested to see also.
You, you wanna see the whole, the whole plan?
The whole scheme of what they're gonna do. I think you're wrong, we laid it, right, Charlie?
I, I don't know, Mike. I don't know what arrangements they've made to use it. I don't even know who owns that parking lot now. Does the, does Cardis own it?
I thought Ocean State bought the, bought Walmart, but I don't know that Tedeschi retained the ownership of the parking lot.
Parking lot belonged to Walmart.
I, I don't know how that...
Seventeen acres belonged to Walmart, but I don't know if that, it's all of it.
It, it might have included the parking between there and what's now the, uh, the Tractor Supply place, but I'm not sure.
But we can ask the question, uh, to show all parking on, on the plan.
And the circulation.
To determine circulation.
Has EMS given any input on this?
Thanks, Mike.
I haven't seen EMS on this one yet.
But I think that would...
I assume we want fire as well.
It's my understanding they're there several times a day when it's busy, so...
All these apparent grease traps?
Spoil pile.
Oh.
That must be the oval floor, right?
That was the old, uh, the old garden that was back there. There was a raised bed back there, the dishwasher you used to... I mean, it was all compost. You could grow people back there, yeah?
Wow. That's probably where Agent Ericks...
So, I can draft up a letter, get it over to the Board of Appeals for Wednesday... Wednesday's meeting, hearing. And, uh, send copies around to the board members if there's anything you think is... Should be included or was omitted. We can, you can let me know.
Three, three spaces, they're looking for parking.
I mean, they were parking down here. On the dirt, along the river. So, you've got some things there?
Yeah. The, uh, the curb cuts, the, uh... The coordination of the larger plan, the, uh, internal circulation, the surface landscaping and the emergency services access.
Do, do we want to comment on the paving or, or the surfacing?
That's what I was saying, the surface and landscaping.
I have to get my ears checked.
I have to speak into the microphone.
Sorry, Bob, you gotta use the mic.
Mike said, "Turn the mic back there."
Wasn't me.
That's okay, what I said doesn't count anyway.
You all set with us, Ken, on this one?
Yeah, that one's good.
Uh, Woodland Cove. There've been changes?
There've been some changes in the Woodland Cove, uh, concept. They've, uh... Changed the phasing. They have not changed the number of units.
Woodland Cove, that's that forty B project?
That's the forty B project at the corner of Cranberry Highway and Redbrook Road. And I had a conversation with, uh, Emmanuel on this. And I think it's appropriate that we consider his, his thoughts on the design.
I, I met with Ken and, uh, first of all, the, the questions with this plan, I have a larger one, actually. Sorry, Bob, I'll have to yell loud.
Are the ear conditions interfering with your audio, Bob? See if they're on. Hundred seventy-four, yeah. Turn the microphone towards yourself when you're talking.
Oh, so, um, and what, the, this plant, site plan concept has the residential at the out, on the outside of the, of the lot and the driving and parking in the front. And, uh, at a previous meeting, uh, several people raised the concern that in order to get to the, um, recreation area, you have to cross the road and parking again. And also visually, it's not the nicest thing to see in your front door. And so, also, it's very dense. Uh, and the number of parking spaces is less than, than should be provided for the number of units. Given... Well, th- these are less than one. The, what's been provided is less than one per unit. Yeah, and Charlie made that point also. And, and in particular, because it's not an urban area, so if you don't have a car, how do you go to the grocery store or to wherever you have to go? So, m- most people will, will have to have vehicle access. But the thing, and it's, it's just too dense. Uh, and if you look at the, uh... You, I think you've seen these, right? I mean, it's just, uh, they have three, three-story units and they have some four-story units. Very massive. And the scale does not relate well to the smaller surrounding structures. So, what we'd like to propose is that they put the cars on the outside of the lot, bring the residential in. Now, you create a recreation space that's directly related to the, to the living. The, the number of units is reduced to a hundred and forty, which I think is a much more appropriate number for the, for, for the density. And now, we can have more than one and a half cars per person. I, I did a, by breaking up the parking area, we can have, uh, two hundred and ten parking spaces. I think that that's a nice, a, a, a more desirable option than, than this. So... That's their, uh, this is a proposed community building.
Have you seen one that they did in Hyannis?
No.
Community building, it sounds like a good idea, but it's not much bigger than what you're talking about. It's just the amount of people that live there.
Talk to him.
Oh, I'm sorry. The community building is very small, the one that they did in Hyannis, and that, that's a four-building complex.
And the other thing, I, actually, I have it in my computer, if you wanna walk through it in three dimensions. But instead of having these large, massive structures, um, they're, they're, you know, they can be articulated. So, I mean, this unit by itself, which is, I think, I'm sorry, six units, this building, but it relates more in scale to the, the structures in the area, so... but it relates more in scale to the, the structures in the area, so. So, and, so th- these roofs, you know, articulate vertically as well as, the, the, the structures articulate vertically as well as horizontally. I think that's a suggestion.
I wonder if having the different sized buildings will create issues for them, because their, their units are all prefab. All they do is just come in with a crane and drop them in place like, like Legos.
Panels, panels, right.
No, no, these are-
They're boxes?
They're boxes.
Yeah, but they're not a hundred and sixty-foot boxes.
No, but you've got varying sizes, so I don't know how that would relate to their design and, you know, what they-
Oh, I understand, but, and I'm not, I'm not designing it for them, but, but conceptually, you, you take the prefab unit and you can still arrange them so that they relate clearly. It will take some thought in terms of internal circulation. Uh, and where the elevator core would go, it would probably go where the four-unit buildings are, uh, the four-story units are. Uh, but, um-
Emmanuel, what were you thinking for traffic circulation?
Well, this is, I, I'm told that this is what has to happen, uh, because of the state highway. The, Ken, you know better. I mean, I pretty much start here and end here, just the way they do.
So if I sat, if I looked over here in the truss unit and I wanna get out, I gotta go all the way around?
Oh, no, no, it's two-way. It's two-way. It's, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's double-loaded and this is a twenty-five, the, the scale here is twenty-five feet. Yeah, you go both ways. If, if, if the highway layout allows it, I don't know.
Right, and, and there's a good chance that would be a right turn only on the, uh, westernmost driveway.
Anyway, primarily this was a rea, uh, sort of a response or a reaction to this arrangement, which has all of the traffic in front of the out, the buildings. And, uh, it in, interrupts the communication between residents and recreation. Whereas this creates an internal garden. Uh, you don't have to look at the cars. We, a lot of nice planting on this side.
It's more of a sense of community.
No. But it requires, I, I think in any case, there are just too many units. Uh, but they, they probably will say financially it might not work at a hundred and forty, but-
Like, it, by having less than one parking spot per unit, they're building in a, a future problem.
I, I believe that the ratio is one point four spaces per unit.
Well, I, I mean, I have condominiums that are in a, an L-shaped building. And it was built back in the fifties and it was one parking spot per condo. And parking is a consistent point of pain nowadays, 'cause everybody has two cars.
Sure, sure. Actually, in this layout, there is more space for, there is space for more than a hundred, than two hundred and ten units. I ju, I just let the number, I did the math on one and a half, but there is more geometry.
And, and now those, those numbers just represent the people that live there. What if you got guests?
Guests, right. And the other discussion, where you put the snow, when you plow, you gotta have a place to put the-
They can push that down to the onset water fields. They can absorb that.
But, uh, they can create areas, you know, but, uh, this allows, uh-
Did it address any of the other concerns that we had in our previous referrals? Like, you mentioned onset water, their drainage was all push, pushing in that direction. Their overflow was into their, is that zone one or zone two for them?
That's, that's zone two. The drainage area on, on this plan was such that all the stormwater from here and from here flowed into two, um, surface rain gardens here and here. And then the overflow from that comes this way, goes through the parking lot to a surface rain garden here with a spill over that goes on to the onset water district property. So with their drainage calculations that they've done, that this area won't be overtopped to where it spills over, even for the hundred-year storm, which they can do. The one issue that I had with putting open drainage areas here is this right next to the recreation area where kids are gonna be playing. So if that were to take place, this area at least ought to be fenced off with a three-foot fence or so to keep young children away from that. But the other issue is that initially, this was phase one, this was phase two, and this was phase three. They did come back and say, now this is gonna be phase one. And I think this two and maybe that one three.
So if three, if three never gets built, how are they gonna put the road in there?
One of the things that the board brought up to one of the hearings was that they felt that this should get built first. The reason for that is that all of your construction is gonna be coming in over areas either here or here that have already been built, putting all your construction vehicles every single day while this other stuff is being done right through their front door. Not a good thing. So the issue of how it will be phased did get changed somewhat. This was one, and then I believe this was two and then three. Uh, that has not been fully resolved and settled yet. The one, one thing that they did do was that they have assigned a project to a traffic consultant who was working for the town to analyze the traffic report that was prepared for this plan. And to analyze not only the, the traffic out here in Red Brook Road, but also the internal circulation of what they had shown.
And that traffic report is gonna be issued on Wednesday, brought to the hearing.
This, um, out here is gonna be a little bit difficult in that this new intersection is gonna be signalized now. And there would be a U-turn control mechanism in the signalization, which would allow somebody to travel along this island and stop, make a U-turn and then come back to come into here. Because this island is raised. But in my view, that causes a conflict, because now as people are doing that, I'm not sure what the signalization, um, strategy will be, but it's gonna be a conflict with people coming out here. So however, they're gonna have to, uh, put together some sort of a sequencing procedure for each one of these lights, so that if people are making these U-turns to come in here, that something happens here to keep people who are traveling through. This can only be a right turn in or a right turn out because of the raised island. You can't come out here and accept to go there. If you wanna go here, you're either gonna have to go all the way through here in Red Brook and then come out here or all the way up to Main Avenue and make the loop there.
What's this guy here, Charlie? Is that for traffic to change direction?
Yeah, that's for big trucks to be able to swing and-
Yeah.
That's-
This, this is, um, some sort of a, an island too here with sidewalks and so forth. This is the way that the traffic comes out now. Um, I think for the right turn coming this way, it will continue to go there. Anybody that wants to go Red Brook Road and come here, start with the signal and then make a left and come over here.
But if you wanna reverse direction to be on this side, you gotta come and do a U back. That's how all the intersections are changing from there to Tyler Road.
Cause I'm not sure what the traffic report is gonna say in terms of the circulation, either within the project itself or with respect to what's happening with the traffic movements.
How high is this reset island gonna be? Is it only gonna be six, eight inches?
Yeah, it's a vertical, well, it's slope granted.
Yes, in other words, people aren't be coming-
They're not gonna be able to go over it.
You don't think so?
They'll get hung up.
You'll lose a muffler on that.
Oh, boy, this is right down the street.
They'll be doing good business.
They won't be able to bump over that.
But on this.
And his piece is not part of it. This parcel that comes from here to here, to here, to here, to here, to here, to here, is being left out of this whole thing for a future commercial piece.
Wow.
Retained by the current owner of the property. And the other thing you need to know is that they laid this out so that there would be three separate lots. This is one lot. Like this.
So there might be three separate owners.
They're setting up three different corporations. One corporation will own this, and as soon as this is developed and they go to this one, they would buy this piece from the owner as a separate corporation. And then a third one would come in here. It has something to do with their financing. I don't understand.
Tax credit program.
Or whatever. But it complicates it in terms of once everything's done and you manage this whole thing, how do you manage it so that this-
Well, you're also, we're back to it's a subdivision of land.
But don't forget you're under forty B, so they don't have to get any kind of frontage or lot size or anything.
What does the fire department say about this? Ken, have they looked at this plan or anything close?
Uh, yeah, they have looked at it. They are gonna be making some additional recommendations on the, uh, on the plan. The water department, the water district is also, uh, has a consultant providing a report that should be available for the next meeting as well.
This is all gonna be supported by this onset district, right?
Correct. Onset, yeah. Representatives from the onset water department have been there to a couple of the meetings and so they're, they've got some, uh, things that they wanna have done in terms of evaluation of the system and so forth. And they, I don't know whether they've come up with a, uh, final, uh, product to get for the sewer. I'm not sure where that stands at the end, okay?
The, for the sewer, there's a, uh, scope that they're looking at for impact to the system that they're gonna be reviewing. The, uh, the cons, the proponent of the project just put up the money to, uh, to pay for the consulting
Just packing up your stuff here. There's no means lying down here.
Well, it's required for this. If, if you were to take this plan and take the current zoning with the, for a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit and count the number of spaces you would need, for this one building, you would need all of these and all of these. For this building, you'd take these and all of these. So when, if you were to try and figure it all out that way, they're way underneath what, um, is required. So we did ask the question, how do you know that works? And they said, well, we've done this several other places, and they give us a list of six or eight different places. But the only project that I know that was a forty B was the one in Hyannis. They've got, I believe there were two in Connecticut, two in New Hampshire, which, you know, they don't comply with forty B regulations and come off. So I don't know what they've got for guidelines. And they were saying that their, their parking ratios are much less, but I don't know what criteria they're actually doing that.
And again, you don't know how rural these other projects are. You're within walking distance.
I went on-
You may attract people without cars.
I went on Google Earth to see where a lot of these were, and I was expecting that I would see a lot of these projects in urban settings. And not in, no.
Well, it, it does too. It puts people back on the street. So if you don't, you know, God, you're hoofing up and down twenty-eight again.
Well, that's what they were saying, that there's a sidewalk there and you'll be able to walk. Where are you gonna walk to? Right?
Well, maybe the old Bennys will come back.
We'll see more and more people walking that road every day.
I mean, there's, I mean, there's, there's no Walmart that they can go to now. You got half a Wendy's.
Seven-Eleven, right?
Yeah. So, um, the issue that the town has, of course, is that this is a forty B project, and so we don't get to look at it the way you would if it was just an ordinary development that somebody would do. You'd never get this density if it was just going by the present zoning.
Have they looked at your-
No, ch- just Ken and I have seen this.
Well, I would certainly throw that out there and see if they, uh-
I mean, this is, uh, town planning by numbers. That's how much can we cram in? Uh, it, it's, it's not, it doesn't produce good, uh, living environment.
Any comment?
Now, that, that would-
They don't return anybody's calls anyway.
No, Mastat is not commenting on the project.
The relationship of the living to the, you know, this is just deadly.
Well, you, you put that, you go up the street here, uh, you know, a hundred feet, a thousand feet, you know, you got all single-family homes.
Yeah, you're right.
They're all the way down to the Narrows. That side of the road.
No, I, I was referring to the relationship of parking to, uh, I think, like, to me, this is the way to be approached, but of course the, this diminishes some of their units. Yeah, if we can present it, I might, might let them think about it.
To my way of thinking, that is a more workable plan.
Well, what did you say, they're four-story some of them?
Sorry?
They're four-sto- does onset have a different height restriction than they have? Now, the ladder's smaller.
Some, some of these are three, some are four, just- That's a four. And I think this is a four.
That might be a four. But yeah, that's, that's the other thing that I did bring up at a joint meeting that we did have with the, uh, various town people, was that in order to reach this building and reach the roof, because of the distance from here to the parking and from the parking out to here, their ladder truck's gonna have to sit out here. Put his outriggers out and hopefully reach that with the aerial. So I encourage them to go to, um, Ray Goodwin and ask him to take a look at that in terms of a profile view or a cross-section of the building height with respect to his ladder and see where he could reach and where he can't, because you can't get through here. You can't get through here, you can't get behind these buildings at all. Uh, with something like this, um, if this were a grass area and they had to get here, theoretically, they could drive across the grass to get to the back of the unit for safety purposes, so. And that's, that's another reason why it would be good. At least you've got access to different sides of the building, whereas this one, you're restricted to the face of the building and that's it.
So if, if the town said no, even because it's a forty B, it's gonna end up in court?
No, we'll go back to the housing, the state housing.
Housing appeals committee.
And they make the decision to-
And they'll stamp it.
Yeah. Their record is ninety-nine percent for the developer. A little bit of exaggeration, but-
Yeah, the point's taken.
Your expectation is gonna have to be that Housing Appeals Committee would-
Now, a project like that runs downtown Falmouth would be fine. That would work in Falmouth.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, just speaking from experience, I mean, I, I've watched the one in Hyannis go up. And the, the, the buildings are not of the highest quality. They are not attractive. The landscaping is very sparse. It, it's not an attractive place to put two hundred residences.
It's another woods of wayne.
There was a company years back that was building a similar thing where you bought cubes or rectangles and loaded them together and built the building you wanted in. They, they weren't very well made.
So do you wanna have Emmanuel's concept brought forward to the, uh, Board of Appeals?
I, I don't think it would hurt to at least have it considered. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be receptive personally, but
Well, we're gonna have to convince them otherwise.
Well, maybe we, between, there's a happy medium between this and this. Cause I'm sure they're gonna look at the number of units and say, okay, we just lost thirty-six units and X number is thousands of dollars per. And i- if I understand, these aren't condominiums, these are apartments, right?
That's right.
So now you get thirty-six units not being rented on an ongoing basis going forward.
Cutting into profit margin.
It'd be good if, now you're being an architect, could make a presentation to the board.
I'd love to, whatever I can do, I, sure.
You, you have the expertise.
I'm ready to talk about it. Why, but a lot of it is also theory, I mean, it's subjective.
Of, of course, but it, it gives, it gives the Board of Appeals, the opportunity to look at something that's an alternative.
Would be very happy to. And then you're right, uh, I kept the, I had the community that's been squeezed in this plan. plan, but I pulled it back. But to me, that, it's a concept, it's, in terms of quality of living, this is a much better concept than this.
Well, and it gives the company an opportunity to be a good partner with the town, rather than just building it and then going away and leaving us with it, you know?
I'd love to, I'd be present. I can even dress it up, you know, as a free design.
You're right.
Not the design, but the concept they have.
Yep. We can do a little, we can do a little PowerPoint.
Yeah. When is the news?
It, it's, it's here.
Is it Wednesday?
It's Wednesday here. If it's too short a notice for you, I'm sure it'll be continued. All right, well, I could probably help you out on that one, but we can, we can wait on that until the, the next meeting after this. Continued hearing.
I'll, I'll come see you tomorrow, and see what we can do.
All right, sounds good. Yes.
I mean, you could actually, you could turn a couple of those buildings and they could get another block in, you know? If they, if it's the number of units, you, as long as you got...
But you're not saving any of one of these, because there is a great, great change. This area was once a flat, but once you get back into here, there's, there's a hole right here. That's why this is there, because it's in the hole. So it's going to have to be a fair amount of fill in any of this area that goes in. A lot of the things I had asked for, because their engineers had done a, an initial, uh, site assessment, twenty-one E. The initial twenty-one E said that there were a couple spots, but they needed to look further because they were concerned about the contamination. So they put in a series of eight test wells, two of which were test wells, so they could extract water, and see what else. I don't know what they were, but what I asked them all to do was, what they were, develop this or this or anything else, but they need to put a couple of test wells back here, so that you've got something to do that initially, so that you would be able to extract groundwater from there, and see what it is today. And if anything, from that, this area then seems to flow in this direction, because this is the direction groundwater flowed towards Saint Paul. They could pick it up here before it got to home, or to their well supply, which is over at Red Road. So hopefully we, uh, improve, improve, if they establish a couple of monitoring wells here just off the property, so that you could do that as a baseline. So you've got something to look at and say, "Okay, here's what it is today. Something still should take place, for example, conditions changed, now you've got some way to tell, well, this is a lot worse right now than it was five years ago, or started, something happened, and all." And I think that would be an appropriate thing to do, whether it was something positive, like Manuel's drawn out, or whether it's something like this. Either way.
Well, do you have a consensus with the board that Manuel's concept should be brought forward? Good, okay. The last item before we wait for Mark Bianco's show is the Articles for Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah, the, I haven't seen the suggested TDR revisions yet. Were there any suggested, or was it...
Yeah, the suggestion was a banking, a land bank program, similar to what Plymouth has, has a land bank. TDR.
Is there an interest with the board on working further on transfer development rights?
What are you, what are you trying to do? You're trying to revive what's in place now?
Okay. Well, we haven't used the TDR, the Transfer Development Rights Bylaw at all, and one of the thoughts was because we don't have a land bank program, a place to, the Transfer of Development Rights is, is where you take development rights from one spot and put it into another location. You can't always find the other location.
Last time we tried working on that, going back probably five years ago, ADM basically grabbed the ball, and they wanted, basically, they wrote it to fit their means, they're the only big players in town, basically.
Right, nobody's used it, ADM hasn't used it either. So what you're telling me is that we should probably contact ADM and ask them what, what changes in the TDR would make, make it usable for them.
I think probably it'd be, it would be, benefit the board, since I don't think, I think Mike and I are the only ones that were here at the time, that maybe we do a little dog and pony show on what the TDR is that we have in place now, and what the thoughts were behind it, and bring the whole board up to speed on that process.
That's a good idea.
There are some, I know we may have been a little restrictive in our final version, and, you know, maybe more eyes looking at it, we might come up with something that's more usable.
I think the initial concept was sincere. I think it got a little diluted as we went along with the process.
All right, so we could go back and explain the TDR by the way it is written right now and put that on the agenda.
And the other thing I suggested was we revisit the, the map changes we wanted to do in West Wayham back in, was it two thousand and six?
Two thousand and six, yes.
Have we, have we found what they were supposed to have been?
Yes, went back through the town records, town reports, and got the town meeting record.
Way, both Wayham Crossing and the Walmart site were done on industrially zoned properties, for the most part, some of them was commercial strip. And back then, our, our use chart was a little more open. After those places were constructed, or during construction, we took retail uses out. So in order to make these properties conforming, a zoning change was to make it general commercial, so it would reflect what the use on the ground is. That zoning change did not go through, it wasn't voted down, I think it was recommended for further study at the time, right?
Correct.
And, which was the little bit of hot burn that we had over the, the drive-throughs, was the property that they was hoping to capture were, were never changed to general commercial. So that was, that was my thought there, was to take a piece, say, from one ninety-five north to the Wayham Pharmacy area.
Well, the Wayham, the Wayham Pharmacy, if you remember, there's two zones in there, it's possible, because the wing of the building where the, the garages was in one zone, in the building where the actual pharmacy was, in the other building.
Well, that would solve two problems. By going that far, you would eliminate the non-conformity of Wayham Crossing, the Walmart piece, the new, and I forget the name of the, I think, I think the zoning was changed for the beaten piece.
That's right.
Or was it just the two lots on Toby Road?
Beaten piece and part of it.
Beaten piece and the two lots. But on the other side of the highway, Cranbury Highway, you have a section of industrial land that comes down and fronts on the highway, and I think that has maybe been an impediment to development over there, because there's uses that you can no longer do in industrial. I know back then, two thousand and six, there were suggested zoning changes from there all the way to the, the, to Route fifty-eight, and I think that was, that was too, too much, too confusing, and there were little pieces left out here and there because of the, because of the descriptions.
Weaver Street, there was a little section in there by the back of it, that was exempt.
I think if we hand, if we were to handle that piece and get that through, it would kind of consolidate that retail area without the threat of extending it further into West Wayham.
So I guess we could do a little workshop with the board and run through what those changes have been proposed and what they mean to the zoning map.
I think we still have all the maps.
Probably, we probably do.
Do you have comments, Ali?
No.
We need a forty B in West Wayham.
Oh, we don't.
You've got a bunch of tin ones.
No, come on, that's, that's... Regarding the forty B and the, the criteria, I was looking at one of the areas that is mobile homes, but they're not on wheels anymore, they're sitting on foundations. And is there any way to have our state, our representative, Ms. Gifford, make the point?
That's been a sore subject for twenty-five years. Manufacturing homes don't count as...
Representative Susan Gifford has submitted a bill.
One?
But, but so, but so are, so are prefab homes manufactured. What's the difference between that and the trailer that's on, that's on...
They're not trailers, they're, they're homes now.
That were mobile at one time.
But I think he makes a great point. I mean, a, a forty-foot-long double-wide is, is no different than a section of these buildings that this project is proposing.
What, what I had suggested, and I don't know if it's gone anywhere, was if we approached the owners of some of the older parks, the more dense parks that still have a lot of rental units in them, if they could put a deed restriction on them, would that qualify the existing properties as affordable? Where their rentals, like, just much like this, all these units count because they're all available. Why wouldn't that work in a mobile home park? But you would need the cooperation of the owner to, to deed restrict the property. I don't, I don't know if that would work, but...
There's not that many rentals down in West Wayham.
No, I'm, I'm talking to some of the older parks, really dense parks, that, that have multiple park units that are owned by the property owner, they're not owned by individuals, that they rent. If they were to place an overall deed restriction on the property, why wouldn't that count? Just like Woodland Cove.
Doesn't, doesn't part of the issue that the underlying land is not owned by those that, that occupy the units?
Right, that's why the property owner has to be, provide the deed restriction on the land.
Because in West Wayham, the only one that's a co-op is the one behind me, right against the highway.
There'd be, there'd be a number of requirements for, to be considered affordable and, and under the state law. One would be the deed restriction on the property, the other would be a subsidy, which could be the permitting that the town does. And with those two items, then the, the units could be considered in, on our affordable housing list.
So is the, is the message from Mike that it's not worth pursuing?
Well, that, that's been spoken for many years, same thing, you know, everybody's saying the same consent, and they should be counted in the numbers. There's, I think there's like seventeen trailer parks, mobile home parks in Wayham. At one time there was, and that's a lot of units.
I mean, the other point is, if, if your median sales price of, of property in this town already meets the requirement, why shouldn't it count without deed restrictions? But nobody makes money that way. You know, it...
Without the deed restriction, you get a lot of problems. I'm, I was the largest developer of forty B in the town of Born. I built over forty-five affordable houses in that town I've seen at all. Problem is, what you guys are talking about, is to get someone to put that deed restriction on a mobile home, they're crazy to do that unless there's money incentive to them. Because we've been down this road. Because the towns want to count the mobile homes against their affordable numbers, and unless you give incentive to the mobile, the, the mobile homeowners, why would they put the restriction on? Because now you're restricting them. How much they can sell it for, how much money they can make on it, and all the income restrictions are, going forward on anything new, I could see something happening. That's what we talked about in Born.
I was looking in terms of, of a rental.
Well, if you do a Section Eight or Affordable, which we've done those too, there is more wiggle room in that than in the homeownership.
Yeah, Section Eight doesn't count toward your affordable numbers, so...
I know.
Is, is Born in the Barnstable County?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and Wareham is in the Boston market area, under the HUD.
So that means your median income is higher, if it's under the Boston.
And our property value is lower.
Or lower, yeah. When I first started building affordable houses in the town of Born eighteen years ago, we'd hold a lottery, and we always did three single-family houses at a time. We'd have a hundred people show up. It was the most unbelievable thing I ever saw. We'd have to draw names out of a hat. In the last ten years, we were lucky to get three people to show up at the lotteries, and we'd be lucky if one of them kind of qualified, because all the restrictions changed, all the income requirements changed, the credit score was a big thing, so...
Any more on that?
The, the only other zoning idea that I wanted to bring forward was this idea for the Tremont Nail Factory to have a mixed-use zoning district that allows flexibility in what we can put in there.
Is, is, when the new bridge comes, is it going to be through traffic again?
I don't know when the new bridge is going to come through, because the, the dam is still an issue as well.
Weren't they talking on a new bridge, Charlie?
Oh, it was in the paper the other day, they were going to start construction within a year or so.
Yeah, talking about next year, that big stack would be...
That's the bridge. The dam is another issue.
And it didn't mention the other bridge that's, that's in the middle of the, that, there is a large culvert that directs water into the factory, and doesn't address that?
No.
Which is probably the best thing to do, that's just fill it in. What, you feel like quenching nails again?
We can take that up again in the workshop, and just wanted to bring it forward as an idea that I'd like to, to address, because it gives us more flexibility in the reuse of the, of the factory building.
You're scaring me with all this...
Of a car show.
All right. We'll have a, one more member here now, so I guess we'll go back to the continued public hearing for Spring Avenue. If you want to...
We have drafted up a, a decision for site plan review approval.
Want to pop you?
No.
It's a fire district.
That's on condition number eight. It should be identified as the fire district instead of the water district.
I think number 16's already been done.
You're talking about the test pits?
Yeah.
Essentially, yes, but we can, we can still look at them. I'll, I'll want to see the bottom of the drainage areas anyway before we actually begin the construction, so. Unless there are some unusual conditions that exist that would adjust that, yeah, you've complied with it, but you can do it again.
So basically, you want to see the bottom?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we should.
As built?
How should that be?
Ken, do you know if, if the final date of the revised plans is still February 26?
They've changed them since then.
Because he, I know their engineer made a couple of changes in the plans that my request, I just want to be sure that we're not looking at the old set when we say February 26. That was an original date.
You're talking about the site plan, Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the correct date?
Could reflect whatever revisions were made.
What is the latest revision on that, Ken? What's that?
On the cover sheet, it says February 26, 18.
That's, that's an original date, I'm sure.
There's no revision dates on this plan.
Can I take a look at him, Ken? Just, because he did make some changes on the drainage, I just want to be sure that we're looking at the right one.
The septic design changed also, right?
There's definitely been changes made since then that Charlie and Ed Glass went over.
Ken?
Yeah, this is, this is the original plan.
Ken, I know my brother Mark dropped off plans to you, Ken. The latest. That's the landscape plan.
It should be a set, Ken, it's got a revision box down here.
Yeah, they all have revision boxes, I don't have any with the date of revised plans.
There was a date revised 5/14.
Do you know if that was the latest, or is?
That is, that is the latest.
Yeah, that would have been our last meeting.
Because that shows the revised septic system for the reduction in units, and it shows an expansion of the two drainage areas that the original plan did not show.
Was that May 14th again?
Yes.
I can go check it over in the office if you want, or we can go with.
We can, I can get you more copies on that, but I'm 99% sure that's the latest revision.
Something like that.
Yes.
Be a good idea to mark whatever plan set you've got there, or the final ones you get, as the approved set, so I'm a bit confused.
I just.
So we'll have, we'll say the approved plant, site plan entitled Site Plan Assessor's Map 115, Lot C1B, Spring Avenue, Wareham, Mass., prepared by Existing Grade Inc. and dated February 26, 2018, and revised up through May 14, 2018, a copy of which is on file with the Wareham Planning Board.
I'll make sure you get those. Make sure you get the latest copy ASAP.
I wouldn't be surprised if we have them in the office already.
I think you do.
So don't print any more copies of paper.
Yeah.
Until I check and see.
All right, just shoot, shoot us an email and let us know. I know my brother Mark dropped them off to you.
I also wrote in that construction of roadway and infrastructure to be completed by, date, what should that be?
Well, we have two years for the, the special permit. We could match it up, so it's consistent with the special permit and have two years for completion of the roadway and infrastructure within the roadway.
The other thing is too, that, I know we talked about performance security, if Mr. Hebb wants to obtain building permits before the site improvements are completed, I know that's in there, there's a document about performance bond, one of the items that are there. That's probably where you want to put the timeframe on that, because he's got two years from now or whenever the special permit's signed to begin the project. Once it's begun, then there's not a two-year limitation, is there?
No, it says substantially complete.
It's the commencement.
Which is subjective.
Yeah. But if he wants his, if he wants his building permit, then he needs to get the security in place. But you'd need to provide, or you can do the, you can do the special permit with the language that's there, but if he wants to get his permits to get started right away, then he'll have to provide the construction cost, and then you prepare a, a security document, whichever way it will be. Get it approved and get the funding approved, and you can set a time limit on that document, which gives him so many months or years or whatever to do that. So there's a, an incentive to get it done, to get the money back, in other words.
Well, this stating the performance bond must be approved and in place before construction begins, not before pulling the permits.
Well, he could, he could begin his site construction, once he's got his site plan approval and the, the 20 days has elapsed, he can begin right away. What you'd need the performance bond for would be the, for the building permits, not necessarily just construction. He, he could start putting in water main, he can start putting in his drainage structures, clear the land, he could do that without any kind of a performance bond, in my view. I mean, if the board sees otherwise, you know.
The bond is to make sure they're completed, so I would think you'd want to have it in place before that type of work started.
That's not how it works, usually. Because what we normally do, just so you know, is we go in there and give it hell and get as much done as we can, and then we go pull building permits, then at that point, there's an inspection done, and they determine what's left to be done, and then that's bonded that way.
That's, that's a typical way that I've seen it done.
Yeah.
In order to get him started, that he doesn't have to post anything to get started. It's when he goes to pull his building permits, you need to know, okay, like he says, this much has been done, this much is yet to be completed, so here's the cost for that work, and you secure that. And then you put a time limit on that, so that, say, after the last building permit is pulled, X number of days, months, weeks, years after that, the final landscaping, final paving, striping, all of that stuff has to be done before you release that security back to him.
So the, the wording would be performance bond must be approved and in place before a building permit, or building.
Before issuing a, a building permit.
Before issuing a building permit, but does that mean you wait for a foundation permit?
It's, what we've done, I mean, I've been doing this 34 years in other towns, they'll give you a foundation permit, but then after that, you've got to do the performance bond. So either, the whole key really, honestly, is, is the certificate of occupancy, is the key to the whole, the whole thing.
What was that again?
The certificate of occupancy is the key to the whole process. Without that, you cannot sell real estate. So up until that point, it's, you know. But we normally get up to a foundation permit, so we can get the foundation and everything graded, and then we have to do the performance bond. Just makes things a lot easier with drainage and, and all kinds of other things, and we can get it all graded. My game plan would be to go in there and give it hell, put the four foundations in, get it all backfilled and graded with foundation permits, and then come before and get a performance bond in place, before I pull the actual building permit.
Sounds reasonable.
Regarding occupancy, I was under the impression we couldn't condition that, because a CO is a, is a function of the building.
In one town, the town of Concord, Massachusetts, I used to do a lot of building back there, they did the performance bond, you couldn't get an occupancy permit until you put up the performance bond. They were the only town that ever did that, to me. Because that's the ticket, without the occupancy permit, you can't sell, you're not going to make any money.
What did the performance bond apply to?
Everything, the roadway, like, we did a seven-lot subdivision, like, the roadway, the sidewalks, the binder, the top coat, all the drainage, all that stuff. So they would let you get to the point where you build the houses, but you couldn't get the certificate of occupancy, which is the golden egg, really, until you put up the performance bond.
No, I was under the impression that couldn't be done, because the CO is a function of the building, the construction of the building.
I agree.
It is not a function of a subdivision.
I agree.
I, I would disagree with that, and the reason is that we, we let you go as far as putting the foundation, and you decide you're just going to abandon this project. We're going to have incomplete roads, we're going to have foundations on a lot that are going to have to be completed, and there's no, no security to get it completed. If we let you go all the way to occupancy.
I'm not asking to go to occupancy.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to go to occupancy.
My feeling is that, at the time, building the permit is issued, so I, I think you can go to foundation, but then no permit for, for structural building without the security.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that, that's what's, the way it's normally done.
And for a time of completion, two years after surety is?
Yeah, we only have a two-year timeframe for that.
After surety is established.
But he could come back for an extension.
Yeah, but you'd have to come back.
Right, for some reason, if the market's not responding and you need to come back and say, I need another year, he'll be permitted to do that.
That's fine. Charlie, you would be doing the inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
Lord willing and the creek don't raise. It's not me, it'll be somebody that takes my place.
Let's hope it's you, Charlie.
You going someplace, Charlie?
What's that?
You going someplace on vacation, or?
Lord never knows.
Yeah.
That's that three score years and 10. So.
So we could go up as far as a foundation permit, and then surety has to be in place for the actual building permit.
That's my feeling, I don't know how the board feels, but, are we satisfied with the lighting, is this what we, I know we debated on the lighting last time.
I think we were talking about the driveway lantern covenant, which, I think you described it a little different in there.
This is shaded, is, let me find this statement.
What number is that?
That's 18.
I don't see anything wrong.
What is this, is this talking about lighting on the house here? Because we, we talked about post lighting last time.
Right, like, I told you guys last time, like, the town of Born wouldn't, doesn't allow us to do post lights.
Yeah.
So everything we did was, we did, like, the condo project I'm doing right now, we have actually six individual lots in this project with different numbers of units. We have one 15-foot-high light on each lot, basically, with two heads on it. And then we have lights, recessed lights, because they all have little porches, we have recessed lights and a light next to the door on each unit. That's what they allowed in, in the town of Born. The big thing we've got to do is we've got, we've got to light up the parking, so that's why we have the lot, the 15-foot-high light, the, the parking is a safety thing. We've got to make sure we have adequate lighting. We also did mushroom kind of lights, about three foot tall, in the front yards, by, by the driveways, for that area.
You're saying 15-foot posts, I mean, that's as tall as the ceiling right now.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we want that in a residential neighborhood, do we?
Didn't you, on this project, you discussed driveway lanterns?
Yes.
At the end of each driveway.
Yeah, you're just talking like.
And.
If you guys want that, I, I prefer that.
I mean, our, we do have a, a description of that, how. I mean, our, we do have a, a description of that, how they're supposed to be installed. I don't know if you have a copy of it.
This is a residential parking area, I'd stay low.
Yeah, I, I think just, you know, 30-inch perimeter lighting at the edge of the parking area should be sufficient.
Yeah, I, I'd stay away, if we have any say in it, I'd stay away from the 50-footers.
I have no problem with that, saves a lot of money and, and people complaining about Fenway Park being lit up.
Well, I, I certainly think that's a concern with the abutters there, I mean, they were concerned with the vegetation and this kind of, this kind of blending into the neighborhood, this extreme lighting is going to be too much.
You have a question, Charlie?
No, I just wrote out some potential language for the occupancy permit.
Oh.
No building permit shall be issued unless, one, site improvements are complete in all respects, or, two, proper and sufficient security has been submitted and approved by the planning board for all site work that is incomplete at the time of requesting the building permit.
Sounds good.
That's fair, that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine. So are you guys saying you don't want post lights on these driveways, like most houses have?
Keep them low.
Keep them low, like 30 inches, that kind of thing?
Yeah, it's residential, right, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not a parking lot.
But, you know, to, to me, in, in my neighborhood, post lighting is six foot.
Right.
15-foot is, is commercial lighting.
But you live on the woods, you know, you guys.
We have, there is a description that, you know, that will be wired, not switched, dusted on, stuff like that, so people leave them on.
My post lights only. It's all underground utility?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you'll have that readily available, Ken, if that's what you're looking for.
Well, you guys can, you can reference, is it a, is it a bylaw or?
It was a, referred to as a covenant when we, when we created it, was there a?
Well, you could add it to number 18.
You just add it to the conditions, the, the description of how they're supposed to be done.
Ken? Do, do we want to correct the date 5/28? That, that was Memorial Day. There was no public hearing then, was there?
No, we skipped that day.
If there were, I missed it.
We're recovering from the Oyster Festival.
So take that out.
Did you put the two-year provision on that statement?
What did I miss that?
You put the two-year provision on the security bond statement?
Oh, okay, public hearing dates, okay.
Down there should be May 14 through May 14.
But we thought we were going to cap it at two years.
Yeah, down here too, Ken. We have to correct that, close the public hearing on, was it the 14th?
Yeah, yeah, down there too, right.
Good, we all good?
I believe so.
So you need a motion on that, to accept?
To approve the plan with the conditions, amended conditions we described.
That's my motion, yeah.
Now, do we, we already gave the special permit, or did we not, is that still open?
It's still open. You closed the hearing, that's what you've done.
So, right now, the motion is to approve the site plan, which is probably a little bit.
Amended site plan of May 14, right?
The amended site plan with the conditions we mentioned this evening.
It's Ken's fault.
And include the landscape plan too, because that's a different individual. It says May 2018, but it is the landscaping plan by JCLA.
So, was there a second, I didn't miss that?
Sure, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so that would be, what was there, one?
4-0-0.
Well, he's abstained, it's a site plan, either way. The other would be to approve the special permit, to be conditioned special permit, or was there a need to, it was the, I mean, the, the use. We had a use issue, right?
Yeah, the, the building commissioner had identified the.
Is another vote required for the multifamily use, right?
Right, it's a special permit. Five or more family residential use within new structures is permitted by special permit, which must be granted by the planning board. In addition, site plan review must also be performed. So you're issuing the special permit on the basis of more than one principal residential building per lot. And five or more residential units within new structures. Under Article 3, Table 321, Table of Uses. And Article 6, Section 613.
So we don't have a separate decision on that, so it'd be special permit is approved, providing conditions of the site plan review are executed?
You can reference the conditions of the site plan review. We, we can copy them over, as a matter of fact, just to make sure the documentation is remains the same.
So it's for seven units, right? Is that what the revision was?
No, for eight units.
Eight units.
Four buildings, two, four buildings? So we're making a motion?
Yeah, that's what you're doing.
Take a motion for a special permit on the approval of a multifamily subdivision? No?
No, it's multifamily use.
Multifamily use of eight units?
On one lot.
The site plan review conditions is previously referenced? Does that work?
That would work.
I can't repeat it, so just a second.
Approve the special permit for multifamily based on the conditions approved in the site plan approval. Descriptions and plan references and all that good stuff. Good luck with that, Jasmine. There's a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I think that rather than having you sign anything tonight, we should revise the, the decisions. And have you come in and sign them, I hope you can make it a, make it into the office to sign. When are you going to have it ready? We'll have it ready tomorrow afternoon. You need everybody to come in? Or just charge?
No.
No, it's got to be, it's got to be the four members.
When, does it have to be signed by, drop dead date? Tomorrow afternoon it'll be ready?
Tomorrow afternoon it'll be ready.
What time?
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, okay.
Sorry about that, Jasmine.
Do you hear that, Jasmine?
So just, it's the site plan review and a special permit, that's it?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a special permit for two different aspects of the, of the bylaw.
Right.
And the site plan review, because of the number of parking spaces.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck. Good luck.
Make sure you drop by and see Mark, David Bernard over at Municipal Maintenance for your curb cut.
Oh, yeah.
You need that on the portion that's the town way, so you probably want to get that started right away.
All right, Charlie, thank you. Excellent, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Anything further this evening?
Yeah, I'm sorry I was late. I, I, I'll be with a client from 2:00 o'clock on tomorrow, if it's ready before then, I can come in. Just text me and.
It should be easy enough to get it done.
Or just come in and sign the, the end page.
If there's nothing further this evening?
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Is there a second?
Don't move. Oh, sorry. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I know Mark wants to stay longer, but.
I just want to know what water was wanted.
Feeding adjourn.
More parking?
9:02.